Good evening, everyone, and welcome to today's work session and also Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you for loving the town of Bladensburg enough to join us for this wonderful work session today. We will now call today's meeting to order. And the first item on tonight's agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I saw move.
Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout. Any discussion? I do want to add that the school truancy item, I want to strike that from the agenda for tonight and push that to March to gather more information for a discussion for the council. So that five minutes can come off. And I would say because we have State Highway on here, if we need to give that to them to allow more time for questions and answers from the staff, that would be appreciated. So changing fifteen minutes to twenty for the State Highway presentation would be my recommendation. Any feedback from the council on that? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
Thumbs up if they need it, you know.
Okay, fantastic. And with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of "aye."
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll move down to the approval of the minutes. Mr. Tarnovich? I think you're muted, but just want to touch bases on that. I think, do we need to table that to the next meeting? I don't recall seeing the minutes, or did anyone else receive those?
Yeah, I finished about, I think it was like eighty-five, ninety percent of them. So I didn't get them completely done. I didn't want to put them before the body without being totally done, so.
Perfect.
They're not complete yet.
Okay, no worries. So we'll need to move those to the March meeting. Any questions from the council regarding that? I don't see any. Okay. So next, we'll jump right into what I think are the highlights of tonight's meeting. One, the first of two wonderful presentations. The first is from Michelle Kokales, Program Manager for Environmental Finance Center at the University of Maryland. And she will be discussing a walkable watershed grant opportunity. And so without further ado, I want to turn it over to Michelle.
Thank you. And thank you for having me this evening. Can I share my screen?
Yes.
Alright, there we go. Alright, does everyone see? The presentation?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So this evening, I just wanted to give you an overview of this walkable watershed project opportunity that we've been talking to all four port towns about. I know a couple of you were on the Port Towns Quarterly Meeting, so this will be review for all of you. Same thing I talked about there, but for those of you that were not, I wanted to take this opportunity to give everybody an overview. And for those of you that aren't familiar with the Environmental Finance Center, we are housed at the University of Maryland. We're one of ten EFCs located throughout the country. Our center serves all of EPA Region Three, so basically all of the Bay States. And our roles are to assist local governments and communities with capacity building and training. We do a lot of work around policy analysis and financial assessment, as well as community outreach and facilitation. So the walkable watershed concept is something that was launched by a firm called SKEO. They're located in Charlottesville. And they launched this concept, piloted it around 2011. And this is a project I have worked on in four different communities in Virginia in the past. And I've really been looking for a way to bring it to Maryland and since I came up here. And I think that we have found our right niche with the port towns. It's essentially a community-based green infrastructure planning tool. And so it's nothing new or extraordinary compared to the green infrastructure planning that we would normally do, except for it really hones in on community engagement, involving the community in the process, connecting communities to the blue and green spaces within their towns and communities, and really focusing in on this idea of how can we leverage existing plans, existing money, existing projects, and double down on green infrastructure during that process. In the past, it's really addressed flooding and resilience in the context of revitalization planning. And it considers connectivity, watershed health, and ecological stewardship at a community-wide scale. So the point being, it really supports the needs and goals such as improved connectivity and access, safe routes to school, safe walking routes, open space, and outdoor amenities. And what's made it so successful is it's a true collaborative approach between local governments, community members, and outside partners. It combines innovative planning with community capacity building, which results in a cohesive strategy that can lead to guiding efforts to improve watershed community and health, strengthening local infrastructure, and most importantly, leveraging existing investments. And one of the things that I think is so great about this project is we really see it as a long-term investment. Those of you that have worked with EFC on other projects know that we don't like to walk into communities and then walk right out of them. We really want to build long-term relationships with communities, and this is a great way to do that. The project that I'm going to use as one of the case studies, which I worked on for six years in Richmond, was started in 2011. And they're still working on it. They're still funding projects off of this plan. They just got a grant to put in a complete green street. And so it really has been a long-term tool for the community. The Mayor James had asked me if I could focus on a couple case studies to give you an idea of what this project has done in other places and what the focus has been. And one of the ideas behind this project is that we really try to hone in on what the biggest need in the community is. In this case, for the four port towns collectively. And as you'll see in Petersburg, one of the key things that was addressed was chronic flooding, as well as a lack of amenities. And I know that chronic flooding is an issue for all of the port towns. And the Richmond project, that whole project focused around students' routes to school and the prioritization for the need for green streets. In that community, they were building a new school. It was a green school. The community that we worked with was largely underserved. All of the students walked to school. And they were walking through a stream that didn't even have a bridge across it to get to school. Get to school. So that project really focused in on things associated with the school. The project in Lynchburg focused on integrating stormwater improvements and walkability with their Safe Routes to School program. They were having a big sidewalk project they were doing through a Safe Routes to School project. And so we were able to leverage a lot of what was happening with that to incorporate these other projects into it. And in Charlottesville, we really focused on building on existing planning efforts to identify early wins that met multiple program goals. Charlottesville is sort of known for developing a lot of plans and not doing anything with them. And so we were able to help them take some of the plans that were sitting on the shelf and activate them. Here's a map that was developed for the concept plan for the project in Richmond. And like I said, it built on student priorities. The plan outlined three major connections to the school and a new community center that was being built. And the school is that big greenish blob in the middle of the map there. And then those concentric rings around it represent the walking times from different parts of the community to the school. And those bluish arrows represent the routes that the children were walking on to get there. And all of those routes either crossed through the stream, literally through the stream, or they were on places where there weren't sidewalks for the kids to walk on, so they were walking on the street. This plan combined the community needs with the locality needs. And ten years later, it's, like I said, it's continuing to provide an action plan for long-term investment in this community. When this project started, the only partners were the James River Association, where I worked, the City of Richmond, SKEO Solutions are partners on this, and some representatives from the community. And ten years later, they've got a full page of partners that are working in the community, and the list of projects continues to grow. So it really has been a pivotal project for this area. And then, like I said, they just got funded a green street. This is the concept plan for the green street. They funded that through the Chesapeake Bay Trust. And so they were able to fund both the planning and implementation of this project through grant funding. In Charlottesville, we focused on connecting neighborhoods to Pollacks Branch, Moores Creek, and the surrounding natural parks and areas. They have a lot of green spaces and blue spaces and no way for people to get to them. And they also had a lot of focus and issue with providing safe passage and routes for both pedestrians and cyclists that were incorporated into their concept plan, as well as cleaning stormwater runoff using green infrastructure before it entered these water bodies. And so you can see in this map, this was from the concept plan that was developed for the Charlottesville walkable watershed. And you can see the blue and green spaces that were connected through existing trails and potential new trails and things like that. Lynchburg was really focused on stormwater improvements. They were in the process of separating their CSO system there. And they also had a big Safe Routes to School program that they were working on, as well as neighborhood park improvements. And so that's what this map is from their concept plan. And it shows you the same sorts of things, potential green street routes, potential park routes, walking paths. The purple stars represent potential project areas. And then in Petersburg, which I think is the one that probably most similarly represents the port towns in terms of the issue, they had a lot of streets that had chronic flooding that were causing major issues with passage throughout the community. Also, a lack of connection to open space and trails through the national battlefield. They also have a lot of historic, just history in the area that we could build on, which is also true, I know, of the port town area. And so this is a map of their concept plan, again showing the same thing. Streets where there were flooding, where there are stormwater issues were, the destinations within the community, so that we could identify, you know, how people could get to them and how the flooding was preventing that transit from happening. And so those are just some examples of what we've done with this project in the past. We have been meeting with representatives from all of the port towns. The way that this project started was we had a meeting with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation in the fall to talk about the idea of bringing this project to Maryland. They have funded this project in all of the places that I previously mentioned. And we had a couple different areas we were talking about with them. And the port towns really resonated with them for several reasons. First and foremost, the connectivity that you all already have, the way that you work together collaboratively already. You have this existing relationship with one another. The issues facing the area, the history of the area, as well as just the demographic diversity of the area. Those are all things that they look to fund. And so what they said, they encouraged us to apply for this small watershed grant opportunity to try and get this project started. So we've been meeting with representatives from all four of the towns to introduce this concept plan, sort of walk through the process, learn more about what the community's issues and needs are, and discuss what would be needed from each of the towns if we move forward with this process. The one thing that I will say is different about this from how we usually work is typically when we work with a town on a project, there's not a real big lift that's necessarily required of the town. And then this is a little different because there is a huge community engagement component. A lot of what we would do would be led by or steered by projects you have in the works or things you would like to do, that sort of thing. And so there is a lot of information that we need from the towns and also some match potentially. So the small watershed grant proposal just dropped last week. The RFP is out now. NIFWIF encouraged us to come in with a full ask for the award, which would be five hundred thousand dollars is what we would be asking for. And the purpose of that would be to work with the four towns collectively to develop one comprehensive walkable watershed plan for all of you. And in that plan, it would also identify specific projects within each of the communities individually. We think that there's also the possibility for some projects that are interconnected between the four towns, which is also really appealing. The main purpose of this grant opportunity is to get things off the ground, get the plan written, get the people, you know, get everybody to the table and form this plan. We hope that there would also be enough money available that we could potentially put a couple small projects in the ground through this. But the long-term goal of this would be to then take what we get off the ground with the small watershed grant and apply for a larger innovative nutrient and sediment reduction grant in the fall. And those grants go up to a million dollars. And through that grant, we would be able to take projects that were identified in the plan and put them into the ground. Much larger projects could go into the ground through that. And again, the opportunity to continue to build and work off of this plan for years to come. Originally, we thought there was going to be a one-third match requirement, but NIFWIF has dropped the match requirement for this grant opportunity, which is great because it was a big lift. But that said, we do feel in order to be competitive at the five hundred thousand dollar level, we still need to provide some match for this project. And that match could come either through cash match or also in kind, meaning volunteer time from people, use of space that we can put a dollar amount on. If there's a staff person that's going to be working with us, we could count their time as match. So the match can come from all sorts of places. And although we still want to provide some, the good news is we're not tied to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of match anymore. And the other thing about matches, we realize that not every community is going to be able to bring the same amount or the same type of match to the table. So we are very flexible on what that looks like, but we do feel it's important that we would have match from all four participating communities. So those proposals are due now. The technical due date is April twenty-first, but given the university's process that we have to go through to submit the proposal, for all intents and purposes, the proposal is due the first week of April. We'll have to have it finished by then. So questions? And Mayor James, is there anything else you wanted me to touch on?
No, that was a perfect recap. And for those, again, who didn't make the Port Towns Quarterly Meeting, I thought it was important to have Michelle come back and present this to the council because the reason, as she stated, that she proposed this was because from the grand tour, the Port Towns was a perfect opportunity for this kind of proposal. And then also, due to flooding concerns that our port towns areas have experienced, this could be a way to address some of those concerns amongst others. So I know our time is quickly fleeting, but I just want to get one or two questions before we have to move on to the next presentation. So let me just scroll through for raised hands. Give me one second. Councilmember Rout, I thought I saw your hand and then my screen shifted. Am I? Okay. Yes, Councilmember Rout.
Thank you so much, Michelle, for this fruitful discussion and presentation. I wanted to ask if the match can be through a MOA or a MOU with another entity that feeds into the town of Bladensburg. Let me give you an example. We have a partner who is our volunteer fire department that we work very close with to meet the needs of our Bladensburg residents in addition to port towns. I'm just thinking about some of their space that they have, as I thought about in kind. But they aren't a particular, they're not the Bladensburg government, but they are a partner. So could you assist me with understanding if the match can be included in a MOA or a MOU with another entity that'll count for us?
Yeah, and I don't even know that we would need to have it in the form of an MOU or an MOA. I think that we could just say this entity that, you know, is within the town limits or a partner of the town or whatever is donating use of their space, and here's what the dollar amount of it will be. We typically will need, and we definitely would need from each of the towns, a letter of support that details that sort of information. And so I'll have to look into what the specific requirements are. I will admit, I haven't had time to, like, get into the nitty-gritty of the RFP yet, but we may just need a letter of support from them that says they're going to do it, or we may just be able to include it in your letter of support. But yes, absolutely, use of space, whether it's a town building or a church or whatever, that can, regardless of the source, could be used as match.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. And then just, we don't have any other hands, but just to wrap this up. And so what I would be looking for is just a formal vote from the council in the next meeting as to whether or not we want to partner with the rest of the port towns on the walkable watershed projects. Because from that, we would also need our port towns to also solidify their commitment so that we could move forward and designate maybe one or two council members or a council member and a staff member, however we want to do it, but to really help facilitate the discussion in terms of what the projects are that we want to prioritize as part of this grant and submit for consideration. As one example, Bosswick House is in the midst of several different levels of activity. And given the stormwater management issues that kind of tie into our next presentation, this could be an opportunity for us to do some stormwater management on that particular property that is town-owned, so wouldn't require a whole lot of extra permissions, but would help support the proposal that we'll hear more about coming from SHA in that area, which affects walkability for local students and pedestrians in Ward One, and could potentially mitigate some of the flooding issues that we're currently experiencing. So just trying to think about how we could tie this to walkability, stormwater management, and other sorts of things that are already in process. So Michelle, we will try to follow up with you this week and let you know whether or not we're on board to move forward because I know you mentioned you're talking with the other port towns. And a decision has to be made pretty quickly so that the next level of organization can happen. But appreciate you joining. I thought I saw Mike Huntinghaake on the call. Thank you, Mike, for jumping on as well. Good to see you. And yeah, we'll be back in touch, but thank you again for joining us today.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
It was a little late, but just really quick, because you touched on the Bosswick House there, which is very, very important, especially for a lot of part of stormwater management. So is it, will the grant allow, if the other municipalities, like, are not ready? Can the, and Bladensburg is ready? Can we separate it out, you know, I guess, looking at just identify certain areas where there's more of the immediate need?
And so we're pretty sure that all four communities are on board, but that said, if three were on board, I think that we could spin it in a way to write it and say, like, our next step would be also to bring the straggler in. So yes, we could do that. But I do, I do just want to emphasize the point that, like, we hope to be able to get project implementation into this grant proposal, but the main focus has to be actually developing the plan so that we have the projects identified. And I'm meeting with our partner tomorrow, and hopefully after that meeting, we'll have a better idea of how much money we need to put toward planning and what kind of money we might have left over for project implementation. But in the meantime, Mayor, if you have other questions that pop up that you need me to answer or whatever, feel free to shoot me an email. Until you all have reached your decision, I'm happy to provide any more information you need.
Great. Thank you again, Michelle, and enjoy the rest of your evening. We'll be back in touch with you this week with an update.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you all.
Thank you. You too. Okay, so we're a little bit past time, but equally as important to the presentation we just heard from the Environmental Finance Center is the upcoming presentation on the Maryland State Highway Administration Route 769C, which some residents may know of either as Forty-Eighth Street slash Quincy Street. And this is a temporary construction plan. So at this time, I want to turn the presentation over to, I believe, Peter. Are you leading this?
I am.
Okay.
I was having issues getting on, and so what you may be hearing is an echo.
It's very minimal, but yeah, no worries. And we can also see your screen. We see the thumbnails on the left too, as well as the larger slide in the center.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and Happy Valentine's Day. My name is Peter Campanidis. I'm with the Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration. I am the Assistant District Engineer for Traffic. I have several people from M.S.H.A. who are here with me. One is the gracious and patient Winston Hughes, who's our community liaison. So shout out to her to thank you for helping me get in. The, I have Aruj Zafar, who is a team leader in the Engineering Systems Team in the District Office with me. And I believe Derek Gunn, who is the Deputy District Engineer for our District Office, is also on the call. is also on the call. So I'm going to begin with the presentation. I'm here to talk about Maryland 769 C Quincy Street, which is, and the project limits are from west of 48th Street, which is the off-ramp from Kenilworth Avenue to get to Maryland 450, all the way to 52nd Avenue. This, so this is a sidewalk project that has been on and off the shelf for the past few years. And the town of Bladensburg approached us to look at taking the project off the shelf and also look at interim improvements to address the, the safety issues that pedestrians and bicyclists have along Quincy Street. So here are the existing conditions. This is Kenilworth Avenue. This is Maryland 769 C. And it starts from Kenilworth Avenue. It goes up through an industrial area on one side and some residential neighborhoods on the left side. Go further up and it becomes more residential. You come around the bend, some more residential, and then the apartment complex right here. These are the limits of the area in question. And right now, it operates as a two-way street. There aren't any sidewalks anywhere along Maryland 769 C. And I say that because it incorporates Quincy Street as well as 52nd Avenue. So we were limited in right-of-way. There are stormwater management and utility impacts. And the issue that we had was trying to provide some type of temporary path until the project is completed design and it goes into construction. So what we found was that there really wasn't any safe area for pedestrians to walk along the section. However, one alternative that we thought of and we tried to develop is to convert this section of Quincy Street to a, from a one-way traffic, let's try that again, from a two-way traffic pattern to a one-way traffic pattern. What I'm going to do is I'll see if I can blow this up a little bit so that you could see this a little bit better. Bear with me for just one moment. Okay. So I'm going to start from the area where the apartment complex is. And what we're proposing is having a, a walking path along the north side of Quincy Street. And this would continue where the existing sidewalk leaves off on, on the west side. And you can see where the sidewalk is here. And we would install a, a more continental crosswalk for pedestrians and bicyclists to cross so that they can enter the temporary walking path. This walking path would be protected with guardrail. And there would be very narrow openings along the section to allow residents who live along Quincy Street to be able to access the walking path. So this would, so this continues on and you can see where all the different residences are. And, and you can see that we get to a point where there is a small apartment complex in the middle of the, of the project limits. And what we try to do here is provide an opening in order to allow garbage collection to occur, to enter into the, into the driveway, pick up the garbage, they would go in reverse and then they would have the space available to back out and then continue east on Quincy Street. And it continues all the way to where Quincy Street veers off to the left. If you were driving eastbound on Quincy Street and it becomes 52nd Avenue. And what we're proposing here is to have a crossing across Quincy Street, which would be stop-controlled. And, and then we would provide a temporary walking path. The pedestrians would then cross again to get into the side path that leads to Bladensburg Elementary School. So this one-way pattern would end right at this intersection and, and it would become a, a two-way street again. Let me go back to this. Show you what else that we're proposing. So we would have signing along Kenilworth Avenue to direct motorists to, if, if they're trying to access Quincy Street, they would continue north on Kenilworth Avenue, get off at the exit, which is signed for Maryland 450. Then they would make the right turn onto Quincy Street and they would be able to access any of this area here. Now, we would still allow trucks to enter this section of 52nd Avenue because it is the industrial area. What we would include is signing to inform trucks that they are, that they're not allowed to go north at this point to access this portion of Maryland 769 C. So traffic would have to go south and then either, you know, make the right turn and, and continue north on Kenilworth Avenue. And we would modify the signing and I'll, I'll zoom in here so you can see this a little bit better. Is that better? Okay. So the, the existing signing would be modified to reflect that, the, the new traffic pattern. Signing for no-through trucks would be provided. And there would be directional signing to show motorists or to direct the traffic to Kenilworth Avenue. And then they would use this ramp. It's kind of a quasi-ramp, but it's a two-way ramp to access Maryland 450, which is Annapolis Road. So this would be the, the, the temporary pattern that we would provide to allow safe access for pedestrians and bicyclists to access this section of Quincy Street. It would, if, if this is something that is approved by the town and the residents who live along this section of Quincy Street, we would, we would make an effort to ensure that the, this pattern would be in place before the next school year begins. And it would be in place until the, the actual project it has noticed to proceed and moves forward with construction. And at that point, we would make every effort to maintain some type of pedestrian access along the project limits. But we, we wouldn't know that for certain until we get into the design of the, of, of the actual permanent project. I see a hand raised.
Right. And Peter, if I may, because some of the residents who are watching tonight may not know that this, the reason that Peter started out the way that he did was this project was scheduled to happen several years ago. And due to changes in the state's budget, the funding was pulled. I think it was around the time of the recession, the housing crisis. And so this is not a new project to the town. This is something that was tabled and as he mentioned, you know, representatives from the town reached out to ask for reconsideration of this and particularly to serve the residents in this area. And I do just want to call out, this is not to take the place of the bigger infrastructure project that is needed here that involves the underground work with pipe removal and replacement and inlet work. So I just wanted to clarify that because some residents may not have been aware of that. But Councilmember Row, your hand was up first.
Thank you, Mayor James, for calling on me. For all of the representatives for S H A, I just want to applaud you for putting this very, very detailed presentation together. Myself, Mayor James, Officer Reinhardt and Chief Collington. We were trying to get all of this information together so that we can come up with this plan for safe passage as we have been advocating since I joined the council for the funding to be restarted. So I just want to just thank you all. I do have a question. I have two questions. The first question is, would you need something from us as our prefer, preferable plot? Because I'm asking, because this one-way situation, as we discussed on the planning call, is my preference because that, that, that high, that, that street is, sometimes it's a lot of speeding and there's winding cones and with that temporary being there, it would be more beneficial for just a one-way traffic situation. And then my second question is, would there be a reduction in the speed limit too? Because it is a temporary situation, would the speed limit be reduced even more? Or the safety of the pedestrians walking on the temporary?
I'll answer the first, the second question first, second question first. So we would leave the speed limit posted at 30 miles per hour. As soon as we put the traffic pattern in, if approved, that is, then we would do a speed study to determine how fast people are, are driving. If, if the traffic and the analysis is conducive to lowering the speed limit, we would pursue it at that time. The, the first question, this is a temporary traffic pattern. Just like the speed limit question, this would be something that we would have to observe. And if we have success, then we're looking at the possibility of making adjustments to the design to, to reflect this pattern.
Thank you. And the next hand I saw was from Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you, Aunt Mayor James. I mean, this is, S H A, thank you all for doing, this is such a great presentation. And it's been a long time coming, since 2011, 2012. Worked very diligently with, with Mayor, Council and, and, and S H A to kind of jump, jumpstart this. So my, my question is that with the temporary traffic pattern, how, how long do you anticipate that temporary traffic pattern being in place? And then also along that section where the pedestrian walk with, and, and, and another thing is that I live on this side of town. So I take, I've been taking this route and take this route every day for, for the, for the, for the past 20 years. So that's where my familiarity is. And, and how, it, it does need to be more pedestrian-friendly because of just, just, I mean, more people live and, uh, parents and children and everything. So, so with, with that said, so how long would it take before, with the temporary process being placed or then across the street where they, where the pedestrians are to walk? That section over there is very muddy and there needs to be some remediation done there and for the water. So would that be a part of, of that when they're installing the sidewalks?
So when we met with the mayor a few weeks ago, there were a few issues that were mentioned by the DPWT. And one of the things happened to be with the flooding that occurs along Quincy Street. And we are in the process of trying to get funding to put in a permanent fix that would mitigate most, if not all, the, the ponding that occurs along this section. So that is part of this, part of this implementation is going to be trying to make sure that we address the, the ponding issue. Now, if everything falls into place, I anticipate having this traffic pattern in place before the next school year. And this is, this is all best-case scenario. If, if we come to find out that this traffic pattern is, is working as well as we, we hope that it will, then it would become permanent. But what we'd be looking at is instead of something that is, that has guardrail as the barrier, barrier between the travel lane and the walking path, it would have a raised walking path that does two things. It's a separator between the trail users and the, and, and, and the motorists. But it would also provide that stormwater management by channelizing the water to the strategic points where, where we would put in inlets to take care of the water. What we're showing here is this temporary, and if it works, we're looking at at least a year that this would be in place before we transition into the, the permanent, the permanent pattern might be with the race, with the race path.
Yeah, would it go back to two-way? Because, I mean, it's, it's the temporary, it, it, it's, it's, it's good. I mean, some people that, you know, are still going to want the two-way traffic pattern and some may not be, may not be as inconvenienced by it.
Sure. That's something that we're going to have to, to monitor. But the reason why we chose a one-way operation- But the reason why we chose a one-way operation heading eastbound away from Annapolis Road. Is that in terms of the convenience factor, it it's just easier circulation to go down Fifty Second Avenue. Make a right turn or a left turn a at the traffic signal. And so it it provides for a safer operation with less turns than it would if we were to have the one-way traffic pattern heading toward Annapolis Road.
And probably more residential traffic than non-residential.
Yes.
Right, and then, Peter, just one last note, kind of building off of the comment you ended with a moment ago. I think in anticipation of this one-way traffic coming off of Annapolis Road onto this one-way direction. One thing I would strongly urge your team to consider is for those who are westbound on Annapolis Road, adding a left-hand turn signal at that light. Because if we're forcing more cars to come around from that direction, there currently isn't a left-hand signal. And it's already a little hairy trying to make that left onto, what is that, Forty-Eighth right there? So just something, you know, to think about as you're not just looking at this segment, but the traffic that's actually feeding into it off of state highway, Route four fifty, that is. But again, appreciate you taking the time to share this with the council and staff. I do want to just pause and give the staff an opportunity to raise some questions and appreciate you answering the questions from the council. Mr. McGory, Officer Reinhardt, any questions, Chief? Okay.
I'll just, I'll just jump in, Mayor, briefly, to say I very much appreciate the engagement from S H A and the level of cooperation. In in presenting this program and ideally moving it before the public. And I look forward to future engagement as this project moves forward and appreciate the array of staff that made time this evening to participate. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, if I could jump in real quick, I too want to say thank you to State Highway Administration for taking time to put this together. And it was a wonderful presentation. My only question slash concern would be for public safety. There were a couple places that I saw, like up here at the split, where it goes Quincy Street and Fifty Second Street, having a walkway there. And I know you say you probably have a stoplight at that location, which would be wonderful. But just looking at this angle, there is definitely a potential of a blind spot there for that will put potentially put pedestrians in harm's way. Someone coming around that curb not paying attention. Second thing is.
Chief, before you continue, one to provide a a point of clarification. The intersection of Quincy Street and Fifty Second Avenue would be always stop-controlled. So there there would be, so we would make sure that traffic comes to a stop. So first of all, they would recognize that they they're approaching a one-way pattern. And that the only turn that they can make is a right turn onto Quincy Street. But we would provide signing in advance, especially for the truckers that. They're unable to continue, at least the note, at least through truckers, that they're not allowed to go beyond a certain point. And that certain point is, I'll go here, it would, it would, it would be around here, around Newton Street. Oh.
And yeah, Peter, I was going to say, and I believe Newton Street also has no through trucks, I believe, posted. So the signs would have to really be a little further back in that industrial section to let the traffic know that they shouldn't continue that way. Because of course, you know.
And and they are.
Yep.
Okay, and my other concern.
Thank you, sorry.
That's all right, so my other concern, I I know you mentioned that one option would be turning this road into a one-way street. But what would be the possibility if we just want to create sidewalks of just maybe taking that, the wood line, maybe back about six feet and put sidewalks down? What would that, and then leave this road a a two-way road? Would that be an option?
Yes, we would have to buy some right-of-way along this section of the road, along the south side of Quincy Street. So that's the original plan. That we would have a more than likely a five-foot wide sidewalk along the south side of of Quincy Street. But yeah, that is, that is an option if in the event that this section of Quincy Street doesn't work as a one-way pattern. And this is the only section of Maryland seven sixty-nine that would be designated one-way. Beyond Quincy Street heading toward Fifty Second Avenue would remain a two-way pattern. Okay.
And Chief, I think the other reason for going with this option is from the initial meeting that we had with S H A. We were asking what could they do right away because of the number of students who have to walk this way to Bladensburg Elementary School? And so that was also part of the thought process, what could be achieved quickest? And so with, as you said, taking that property on the other side where those homes and apartment buildings are. If I'm not mistaken, and Mr. Campenades, tell me if I'm wrong here, but I think that's going to be a lengthier process versus doing it the way that they're proposing here. So that was just one of the other things that came up in a prior call was the timeliness of what could be done. And with this option, it could be achieved by the beginning of the next school year, which is important.
That's a good segue. What would be the next steps?
Yes, so I do have a note with Ms. Hughes, I think I sent it out last week, with some proposed dates. Because our next steps are to have a community meeting where you all, as we talked about before, could present this to more of the residents who would be directly impacted. That's a critical piece in allowing them to have some feedback in in this process before we were to move forward. And so Ms. Hughes, I think, is on, but I did, as I said, send several dates and kind of used like a evening model of like Tuesday, Thursdays around seven P M. As some options for your team to consider based on your schedule. And then once you all can tell us what of those dates work, I'll get with our council members and staff and just, you know, make sure some of us can join as well. But the understanding is it's a S H A-driven meeting, so we'd lean on you all to get the community notices out to each of the addresses that would be affected by the the proposed changes. Does that sound about what you all were expecting, Ms. Hughes?
We can absolutely coordinate that with you and work through the details. We were looking at the dates and March, ideally, the ones towards closer to the end of March are the ones that that I think will work well. And and I'll look at them and and follow up with you, you know, midweek the latest.
That is perfect, because again, I just want to make sure our council members and staff members are able to join in addition to the community members. So thank you for the initial feedback there, but thank you all again for joining. We definitely appreciate you fielding our questions and just seeing this after so many years of wanting a sidewalk in this area. It's encouraging to see some steps helping us to get closer to that. And and just for the residents, we also had Senator Augustine for a portion of the last meeting, just so he could offer some input as well. And he seemed to also be in favor, so just really looking forward to the next steps, which are getting feedback from our residents who would be impacted. But again, to the entire S H A team, Mr. Campenades, Ms. Hughes, Mr. Derek Gunn, if you're on, Ms. Erica Rigby, if you're on. Thank you all so much for your work with our team, and we just look forward to continuing the conversation and progress on this project and the others that you all have in the queue for Bladensburg.
Absolutely, absolutely, and Arusha and also Claudine, who are.
Oh, yes.
Know her also part of this as well, make sure that we keep them involved.
Yes, thank you both Claudine and Arusha, thank you for calling them out, Ms. Hughes. All right, have a good night and enjoy the rest of your Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, Peter.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Bye, everyone, thank you, Mayor James.
Absolutely, thank you, council and staff, for all the great questions there. I think that's the benefit of having such a diverse team. We all look at things differently and can pull out critical components so that we make sure we're getting the best scenario for our residents. At this time, I want to, I'm noticing the time, so we will have to move quickly on the remaining items. We have thirty-one minutes left before we need to open our council meeting. But I think that presentation was a long time coming, as Councilmember Brown said, we've been waiting since twenty eleven. So it was worth giving them that extra time there. But next, Mr. McGory, Town Administrator McGory, if you'd like to take us through the State of Maryland bond bill recommendation briefly. I know it says fifteen minutes, but we're going to need to move swiftly there.
You just tell me when my time's up, Mayor, I'll I'll keep it as brief as you want. So, you know, as we've discussed in preliminary fashion, we, staff certainly feels that new municipal center or town hall is needed and a new police station. So we've gone through the process of initiating the submission of a legislative bond bill. And that, you'll see, there's a one-page handout in your packets, it's very basic in the request. In parallel with that, there've been some some very helpful write-ups. We've come up with a couple of PowerPoints to support this notion that talk about, you know, one compares the specific needs of the current town hall. Chief Collington did great work on another PowerPoint that really lays out a floor pan plan for what a town hall could look like, just a very rudimentary concept plan. And the goal of those, we had a deadline to communicate with, Senator Augustine had set up a meeting with the Chair of the Capitol Budget Subcommittee in the State Senate. So we were turning these out to try and get some headway and get some talking points together and some basic facts for that. That meeting went relatively favorably, it was pretty expedited. And now, having had Senator Augustine submit this one-page legislative request on behalf of the town. We now have the following document, which is the six-page document that is in blank form. And that is due to be submitted by March seventh, I believe. And we obviously want to get it in sooner than that if we can, so we can have more time for advocacy among our legislators on this. But we do want to take a pause, obviously, and get, one, the council's full buy-in on this because many of these documents have been shared with you as they've been developed. But you have an added a meeting in which to vote on them and formalize your support for this process. You did formalize moving forward with the bond bill. And the other thing that is is in the mix, Vito Tonelli, the treasurer, reached out to our town engineer and has set up some preliminary meetings. So we can really sharpen our pencils and get a better spits. A lot of this was based on cost estimators pulled off the web, communications with colleagues, and some other resources. But thanks to to Vito's effort to reach out, we're going to have some meetings set up in the in the near future to work with the engineer and some architectural firms. That have some experience working on municipal buildings. I've got some experience building municipal buildings largely for utilities, nothing as robust as a municipal center. So it's it's going to be great to have those, the technical experts alongside of us. But given the turnaround falls before your next meeting, we wanted to make sure we did a check-in with the council, got your buy-in, and hoped for vote of support for the process as we move forward. And any thoughts or information you care to share with us, please send them my way to anybody on the leadership team, and we'll absolutely put that in the mix. So with that, Mayor, questions or comments? And and I do want to say, this was really a team effort. Rich, Vito, Chief, all did terrific work pulling this information together on a tight timeline and a good, good amount of work over some weekends. So I'm I'm really grateful for for all the support, and I think the the potential payoff is is significant in terms of the level of customer service. And that we will be able to provide in a newer facility, attracting and retaining staff. In some cases, we've had challenges recruiting as many places in the current hot job market. And lastly, as a revitalization tool, if our municipal center speaks to the pride we take in the town of Bladensburg. Their proposal, reinvestment in Bostwick, et cetera, can really also help encourage other developers to invest in in Bladensburg and the port towns. So with that, I'm open to questions, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for that great overview, I think you laid it out there perfectly. And I do want to echo the gratitude for all the staff time that went into this first phase of data collection and presentation gathering and so forth. As Mr. McGory mentioned, the presentation to the Capitol Budget Committee went very favorably. And the chairman, Chairman Zucker, has been to our town hall, so he was very familiar with our constraints. So the timeliness of this, I don't think can be impressed upon us enough. The other morning, I walked in about a week and a half ago, and the drywall screws and curtains had completely fallen off the wall on the floor. And I know Councilmember Rout noticed it yesterday, and she goes, did I do that? No, ma'am, it was not you, it happened Wednesday before last when I walked in, and I was there the day before, and they were up just fine. So the building is falling apart, folks, we we have to move. But with that, okay, that was weird, I saw a hand and now I don't, was that, it was either Councilmember Brown or Councilmember Rout, because it was on my right side.
No, I was clapping.
Oh, okay. So, yeah.
Because I was so scared, I was like, I done broke the.
No, it was not you.
Hey, but Mayor, I would like to say, just go, when you all get a chance, go and take a look at College Parks.
Yes, absolutely, and Mayor Woohan is really looking to host us for either the April or May P G C M A meeting, so we can actually go in and see it. So I agree, that's a great example. I think Mount Rainier has a new facility as well as Sea Pleasant, so we should get ideas from them and just have our visioning session amongst our team. But also open it up to the residents, because ultimately this will service them. And I'd love to get their ideas for things that would be helpful and to improve our customer service capabilities. Now, this is on the next agenda, so I'm going to move forward so we can try to get through a few more things, because we do have more time to discuss it in the seven o'clock meeting, if there are no other hands. Okay, so the next thing is back over to you, Mr. McGory, ordinance zero one dash twenty twenty-two, the F Y twenty twenty-two budget amendment for review.
Thank you, Councilmember. So we put in, as as was discussed at the last meeting, this, you know, routine mid-year budget amendment is not an unusual thing in local government. As you're aware, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we didn't yet have the cash in hand for the American Rescue Plan funding. So we wanted to sort of scope out how much we thought we could reasonably spend this fiscal year. And in parallel with that, we've developed some some plans for moving moving ahead with that. As noted, the council had had voted at its last meeting for us to deploy test kits and masks to the community, two each per household. And so we've set about purchasing those items, those would be fundable activities through the ARPA funding. There are some other areas where funds have already been spent that we can retroactively apply those to the ARPA funding. And and in addition, there's a proposal later on the agenda for employee employee bonuses related to the pandemic. That is also something that many jurisdictions are doing to fund emergency responders in particular out of these ARPA funds. So the the adjustment from last meeting is that now there's a number there, and that is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we thought could capture some of these initiatives and leave. that we thought could capture some of these initiatives and leave some headroom for additional expenditures this fiscal year as purchase orders are drawn up and building on the great meetings that you all hosted from the council, meeting with the community, the residents meeting, the business community meeting, and the staff meeting. And so, you know, consolidating those things and turning them into purchase orders and putting them back in front of you for your consideration, this will now give you the opportunity to, to deploy those funds in the current fiscal year. And just the last thing I'll mention, it isn't spent of that amount, would revert back and be available in future fiscal years. And as we know, the, the all-in date for this is twenty twenty-six. You have to have your plans made, I believe, until the end of twenty twenty-four. You have to have commitments on how you're gonna spend that money. But you could continue to spend some of those funds with those committed activities through twenty twenty-six. So with that, I'll leave it for questions from others or comments from other staff.
Sure. Any comments or questions from the council before I go to staff? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. McGory, for that overview. And again, just checking the next agenda. I know we have it on there as well. So moving to the next item, employee bonuses. We're coming back to you, Mr. McGory.
Okay, there's two, two separate items that have been put forward. One was, as I just described, the, the ARPA-related bonuses. And then there's additional suggested bonuses consistent with the Personnel Manual for above and beyond kinds of, of activities by two individual staff members. So I'll touch on the ARPA bonuses first. I don't, I think this has come up in various meetings with the council, but never in a, in a consolidated format where, you know, the council actually dug into this as a policy matter. It's been said by a number of folks involved in the government leadership that this would be a, a good thing to do. There's a proposal that was sent to the council that is just simply a, a talking point. It's been reviewed by the department heads for applicability and practicality and consistency. And so I think, you know, we are comfortable with that or, or something like it. So we're certainly open to the council's guidance and direction. Should you want to take action on that at tonight's meeting, have a discussion tonight, or consider doing it at a future meeting. But just wanted to put that in play, given that it's been bandied about over these several months that it has come up.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McGory. And I do appreciate the department heads giving some thought and putting a, a metric, you know, a rubric behind how those ARPA bonuses could be equitably distributed. And even the commentary about just understanding that ARPA does come with certain restrictions. So of course, emergency responders, first responders, public safety fit into that criteria generally. But we recognize there are other staff who've served with dignity, who've sacrificed a lot, some who've even been sick, you know, over the course of the pandemic serving in their designated capacities. And so I appreciated just laying that out and saying, you know, this is what we can do with the ARPA funds and to make sure we take care of the rest of our team. We can handle that through our operating budget so that, again, there's equity amongst all of the team. And separately from that, just the fact that you all care enough about these folks who, again, have been so diligent and faithful during times that I know I personally could not have even imagined that we're going through and still being willing to step up and do more and assist. Sorry, my time was going off for you, Mr. McGory, for your update. And I'm trying to keep us moving. But I think it's so awesome that two individuals were recommended for just a pat on the back, atta boy, however you want to phrase it, on-the-spot type award. And I think that is a, a great, a great tool to build a sense of camaraderie, respect amongst the team. And, and so they know that the leadership is paying attention and wants to have more of that modeled amongst others. And so I know the personnel policy allows for those kinds of things at the recommendation of the supervisor to the town administrator. And then you're able to bring it to the council so we can make sure this isn't something that's just being given out every day. You know, today, Keisha gets a bonus. Tomorrow, my, my best friend who, you know, I think deserves, right, Councilmember Brown. You know, it's, the personnel policy is there for a reason. And this approval process is there for a reason. And I think, you know, a couple of times a year, it is certainly, is certainly reasonable that we would move forward and recognize a couple of employees. So I think it's great. I just want to open it up. But as I commented to you previously, I think, you know, it says a lot about the leadership that you all want to recognize staff in this way. But want to hear from my colleagues, any further comments or questions? Councilmember Blunt.
Yeah, my, I mean, you have great employees and a lot of times they deserve it. But like you said, I mean, you, you really mentioned and touched on some of the things that we talked about. I just wish it was policy, something put in place. Because I know you're talking about two. One for referral. Is there a policy for how you do referrals? Is it a policy? Even though it's in the, in a charter, it still should be something put in place when though, with, anytime you're dealing with giving away money to an employee so it won't look favorable to this employee opposed to another employee. Whether it's ARPA funds, whether it's any kind of funds that really have to be looked. It's just not the way it's done. But again, I'm hoping that you all work on a policy so that everybody know what the policy and bonus is. You're not getting ten bonuses a year just because you helped somebody across the street while, while doing your job. So, and that's all. But yes, please, by all means, I mean, I have no problem with that, but it just needs to be policies or something put in black and white so that nobody will feel left out during that time. So, and that, that's my only, only thing with that. Because referrals and bonuses is two different entities. One is a referral fee and one is a bonus.
Thank you, Councilmember Blunt. Trying to look, hold on, let me scroll. I heard someone say something, but I can't tell. Oh, Councilmember Rout, yes.
Thank you, Mayor James. I spoke with the Director extensively over the weekend, who suggested it to employees. And I spoke with also Mayor James and Councilmember McBride, Councilmember Blunt. I just, you know, I, I too would like to see policy because, you know, we can all disappear tomorrow, but, you know, we want to leave this town in better shape than we received it. And I just think for the purposes of recruiting, for the purposes of having, setting ground zero for our staff to aspire to take on different projects and recruit, what I'm looking at is three different types of bonuses. There's a special circumstances bonus that can be, that we all agree, that our staff definitely across the board, everyone who was here and who served during the, the public health emergency. It may be a war next time. It may be, you know, a duratio again, you know, it may be anything. So I think that does need to be established, a policy for that, what that looks like. The second is a referral bonus, as Councilmember Blunt shared. It's, you know, what does that, does the employee have to stay for a certain amount of time? You know, what is that, you know? And then the last, which I do feel that our, not only our directors should have a say-so, but colleagues should recommend, Mayor James was giving an example of colleagues being able to refer or, you know, suggest that this colleague has gone above and beyond and then recommend to the department head so that it creates a positive morale environment. So when I wrote back unto colleagues and to the directors talking about some side of rubric, I was mainly, maybe rubric wasn't the right word, but maybe policy. So I'm looking forward, but I definitely applaud the Director who, who took it upon himself to really write this up. And I applaud the staff for their amazing work. And so I'm looking forward to receiving the three different policies, if that is the pleasure of my colleagues.
Thank you so much. Any further comments from Councilmember McBride or Brown? And again, this is up on the next agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, under new business, so we will have further time there. All right. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. And next item on the list is the Ward One Parking Issues. And just noting the time is six forty-eight, so we'll just have to do the, the Capital Budget Request for Bostwick pretty quick, pretty quickly. But yes, Mr. McGory.
Well, do you want me to do the Bostwick Restoration thing? Because I could be two sentences on that and kick it to the next meeting.
Go for it.
So just for that, you've got a substantial amount of information in your packets about the Bostwick proposal. Again, this was a tight turnaround time with the Capital Budget Request. Full marks to the elected leaders and, and Mayor James for getting this in front of, in front of the Governor's Office for consideration in the Capital Budget. They, again, sent a bunch of follow-up paperwork to say, hey, you gotta fill out these forms and write up what you're gonna do. So this really was an effort with great support from our partners, Amen Trust and technical support from the Bostwick Group and the efforts of staff and council over many, many years that the town has owned this property. So the, the main purpose of this, again, is to just get the council to sort of have read it, have vested in it and voted to move forward. It does imply some, some budget implications, although there's not a required match. We think it will help our case to have some town funds put to the project over the next several fiscal years as the town has done in the past to match various funding pots. So that's, that's all I have on that, is that's before you for a vote, basically to validate documentation that's already been submitted. And unless there are questions about that. Back to Ward One Parking Issues. I think the Chief had some comments on that.
Okay, great. Chief Collington? Oh, sorry, Chief, give me one second. I saw Councilmember Rout's hand.
Thank you, Mayor James. So it was, it's been brought to myself and Councilmember Brown's attention by our Ward One residents that the parking issues are really exact, it's, it's, it's becoming worse over the course of just, you know, everyone working from home and just things of that nature. I did do some research with our municipalities that are in Prince George's County. And there are different things that are taking place. Parking seems to be an issue amongst all of the municipalities in this locality, in this area. For example, New Carrollton, they have a no commercial trucks on residential streets resolution that was just ordained. And so we can look at that as a model. But I really would like to look to see what can we reenact or resurrect, that's a better word, resurrect the work that's been done during Councilmember Brown's term, previous to this, this, her current term on the parking, there was a parking committee that, that was, you know, they did a lot of work. There was residents, Officer Reinhardt shaking his head, I'm sure he was a part of that. Just can we, oh, he wasn't? Okay. So can we find where those notes are or, you know, anything, any evidence that we have of that? Just to see what work was already done and really looking at that so we could, you know, provide ourselves with enough information to respond to some of these resident questions that I'm not too sure how to respond.
And thank you, Council Route, Councilmember Route, for that setup because I did do some investigating and was able to get some of the notes and documentations from the parking committee, from one of the members. And basically where things were left is, yes, there were a group of residents who made some recommendations. The challenge is, they were only concerned with a specific segment of the community. And so the recommendations were received by the council, but there was also the understanding that a professional organization would need to come in who can actually, like a traffic engineer, so that we're not just looking at a couple of blocks where this is an issue, but across the town. And when that dollar amount was shared with the parking committee, there was some sticker shock. They did not want to proceed in the council at that time. And Councilmember Round, tell me if I'm wrong, because I talked to another member of the council at the time to get some information. They said, okay, well, the residents on the parking committee don't want us to invest in this any further. And so nothing happened from that point on. But I just wasn't able to get all these files shared because it's a lot of information. So I may just have to thumb drive it, drop it and do it for each of the council members. But Chief Collington, I want to turn it over to you. And when it gets down to like six fifty-eight, if we're still going, I may have to give you the, the pause sign and we pick it up on the other side. Go ahead, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, council colleagues and community. I want to be real brief. I have other information, but I'll just talk on one that I think that could probably be, in a short term, more beneficial to the residents. And that is creating a residential parking permit. Other areas have them. I'm familiar with them. You know, what, what happened, they would have to, the vehicles would have to be registered in Bladensburg. You would come and get a parking permit pass. And we can limit it to two or three, whatever the council choose, two or three cars per household. So you can get one-year permit. The jurisdiction I looked at is twelve fifty per year, per vehicle. Or you can get twenty, pay twenty dollars for a two-year permit per vehicle. This will, and you will also get one visitor pass per household. So this would drastically reduce the cars that are parked along the street, creating more parking spaces for our residents. And what else? Oh, so again, I think that in a quick, quick note, that would be one option. I do have some others, but creating a residential parking permit, I think it'd help alleviate a lot of the burdens that our residents are experiencing parking up on Teller Street and a couple of other streets up there. But having some of these vehicles removed and then as well as having the commercial vehicles taken off the street would definitely benefit the residents.
Thank you for that, Chief. And the other benefit too, and again, this was a challenge the last time the group had the convening going on, the concern with having to pay for a pass. But the reality is, if we require the distribution of those passes, then that makes, makes, it allows the owner of the vehicle to ensure that they're registered here in Bladensburg, which means with MVA, we get that money for HURs because that's the other concern. We're missing out on revenue that the town should be getting because vehicles are registered to Virginia or DC or Delaware. They're not properly managed, you know, registered and showing that these individuals are indeed Bladensburg residents and the vehicles are not registered to Bladensburg addresses. But Councilmember Brown, I did see your hand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just really quick, six fifty-five. One, some of the concerns are enforcement, also the multiple household, households with more than, more than three or four colors. And, you know, that's, that's just a lot in, 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 in Bladensburg. So there, there are a lot of, there are a lot of other issues that, that, that kind of snowball, snowball and trickle and because we had also talked about DC, kind of nearing, nearing there. Permit one side, permit parking the other side, open parking, limited time. But the enforcement and, and some of, some of the other considerations, so. It's fifty-six.
And I see one more hand, Councilmember Rout.
Yeah, I just, just the commercial trucks too. So, I mean, I know I said that before, but the commercial trucks takes up lots of space for like two, two, you know, regular compact cars. So if we could figure out, I think that, we can do that first. I'm recommending we do that first because no commercial truck should be parking on our streets overnight. And then we could then take a look at these other mechanisms to see if that frees up some space. Yep.
Thank you. And you know what, Councilmember Blunt, I apologize because I just realized your hand was up, but it blended into your cabinet. I'm so sorry. Please go ahead. That's, that's my fault.
This is only for Ward One. This has nothing to do with Ward Two. Am I not correct?
This would be something we need to consider town, excuse me, town-wide. I don't know how, how it would look for a government to say, we're only gonna create rules for one section. So we do need to look at this in totality for the entire So we do need to look at this in totality for the entire town.
Because here, we have a lot of families that, that take care of their seniors. I mean, that's here at Emerson House. I'm not, I'm sure it's the same way at Parkview, as well as, you can green, and it's, you know how the parking is now. You're getting many calls about our parking. And for them not to have a place to park or have to be paid for, that's going to create a whole lot of residents who need their families.
We have to think about all those. You're absolutely right. Thank you for mentioning that, because that really is an important consideration. Um, so we're starting this conversation for the resident who reached out. Thank you for contacting us. And you see, we were committed, it's on the agenda tonight, the conversation is being restarted. So we will continue, um, to move this forward, because, um, we realize it is definitely a pain point for many residents and we want to be responsive to addressing it with the best solutions. And so we have now come to the end of our agenda, so I will now take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilmember Blunt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rout, all, or sorry, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye?
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. We're adjourned.
One, one minute for water.
I'm running.